Good morning and welcome to the Calaveras County Board of Supervisors regular meeting of November 12th, 2024. Calling this meeting to order, we will be going into closed session. Madam Count?
Close session, item one, pursuant to government code 54957B1, public employee performance evaluation title, county executive officer.
Thank you. Any public comments on this item? Are there any comments online?
We have no online public comment.
Very well. We will recess to closed session. We'll return at nine o'clock for the regular board meeting. Good morning. Welcome back to the Calaveras County Board of Supervisors meeting for November 12th, 2024. I called this meeting to be called to order. If you are able, will you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? Sir Roger Hubbard, you may read this this morning.
Thank you Chair. I (inaudible) 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 (inaudible)
Thank you. Madam Clerk, do you want to report out in closed session?
Yes. Close session for today, Tuesday, November 12th. Item one, pursuant to government code 54957B1, public employee performance evaluation title, county executive officer. Board action, no reportable action taken.
Thank you. We'll move to staff announcements.
Good morning Chair. Good morning everybody. Lisa Medina, Environmental Management Agency. Number one, I want to thank all the veterans in this room. Right now, I know we have several, including some of our department head staff. I want to thank them. In honor of Veterans Day, we at Animal Services have free adoptions. We found this in the Food and Adv Code that vets can adopt an animal for free once every six months. So that means a lot of animals might be going home. So that is something that we are advertising today and it's also on our social media. This includes spay, neuter, microchip, and rabies. So we're real excited about that. We have our holidays coming up. So with holidays, that means turkey, that means ham, that means our pets are going to be getting those table scraps, hopefully not to injure them because table scraps can injure the animals. Ham and turkey have a lot of salt content in them and it leads to, you know, vomiting, dehydration, and things of that nature. Along with that, fatty, sweet, and spicy foods, along with the turkey and ham kind of chicken bones, which can be dangerous to your pet's health. Keep your batteries. I know my Nyla that I adopted from our shelter, she likes to chew on everything. I call her Jaws. She was chewing on batteries, on ornaments that I had on. I think she even took the glass that I had on the table and was starting to carry that around. So be real careful and this isn't something, you know, I don't want to preach, you know, to the choir, but it's something I think that even I need a little reminder of. Mistletoe holly leaves can cause gastrointestinal and cardiovascular issues. Steer clear of the tinsel, which can cause vomiting, dehydration, and also it can cause obstruction. Caution around candles because those wagging tails tend to get in the way. They're happy to see us and sometimes we have a candle and we smell a little singeing hair, which is not fun. I've been through that as well. Loud noises. Loud noises also interrupting our animals and they get a little scared and they run off and then they end up at our shelter. Snow globes. Who would have thought that snow globes could be injurious and/or potentially hazardous to our animals? They have ethylene glycol, which is a sweet tasting chemical, but if that globe breaks, you know, the cat and/or the dog starts licking it, it can cause serious injuries and lead to fatal intoxication for pets and other animals as well. So if you think your pet has ingested something, you should call your veterinarian or you can call the ASPCA, the American Society for the Prevention of Cruelty to Animals. They have an animal poison control center hotline at 888-426-4435. And I've also included that on our display as well. And that is all of that.
Thank you. Kim?
Kim Prado, Calaveras County probation. I'm here to kind of discuss some of the impacts that Prop 36 is going to have on the probation department. I prepared a letter for the board and anyone else who would like to look at it. Basically, Prop 36 creates two new classes of felony. Petty theft, shoplifting with two prior theft charges now become a felony. Possession of hard drugs with two prior convictions also becomes a felony. And hard drugs is defined as, and I'm not going to define all of them, but fentanyl, cocaine, methamphetamine, heroin, along those lines. The petty theft statute also comes along with a mandatory drug treatment. It's the treatment mandated felony clause in Prop 36, which creates a new caseload, mostly likely for probation, which is a diversion caseload or deferred entry of judgment caseload that is specific for treatment for those felonies. Of course, the person has the option of whether or not to take that diversion or they can go on to a felony probation sentence with jail. Jail state prison sentence, which generally has a mandatory supervision tail with probation. Or they'll end up in state prison and come out on post-release community supervision with probation. There's also going to be impacts to our pretrial caseloads as those are generally all felonies and the number of felonies we anticipate to increase. Lost my place. So all these increases, the numbers that it can increase by has been very hard to try and determine. From the decreases that this came about because of Prop 47 that was passed in 2014 that reduced all those drug and petty theft with the priors to misdemeanors only, now they're back to being increased. Those caseloads for Calaveras appears to have dropped by 10 to 15%. So that's kind of what we're anticipating our caseload rise to be. But those numbers are really hard to say that that's a good number because not everyone took advantage of having their cases reduced to misdemeanors back in 2014, 15, and 16. So I anticipate that in the future, near future, as the election will, our Prop 36 will become law upon certification of the election, that we will start needing a new deputy probation officer. So if you are interested in the letter?
Does that mean the states are then going to increase your funding?
There was absolutely no funding for this proposition.
Thank you, Kim.
So.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, just one more. Just one more.
Good morning. My name is David Bugarren. I'm an analyst for Calaveras County Behavioral Health Services. I brought some information today to talk about a new program coming to Calaveras. It was signed into law on September 14th, 2022, SB 1338. You might know of it as the CARE Act or CARE Court. Just wanted to give some information to you all and to the general public about what CARE Act is and who is eligible. The CARE Act will be initiated in Calaveras County December 1st, 2024, so just in a few weeks here. We've been working with the court to make sure that everything's set up to go. We are ready to go live. The CARE Act is a voluntary program. Individuals in the community, such as family members, law enforcement, behavioral health workers, individuals at local emergency rooms, or doctors can petition the court for individuals in the community to receive an assessment, participate in behavioral health, and other social services. It's really a way to get people to engage voluntarily in their own care. This act, however, is specific to adults with a confirmed diagnosis of schizophrenia spectrum or other psychotic disorders who are not currently stable in the community in which this avenue of receiving care would be the least restrictive alternative for them. So it's supposed to be an alternative to LPS conservatorship. Just really important to understand, the services offered are anything clinically appropriate that includes housing supports, assistance with securing medical coverage if they're not already insured, and any other community needs that would ensure the client is stable and working towards recovery. A petition can be filed with the superior court themselves. They do have a self-help center. They have a website that's dedicated to the self-help center as well. We've linked all of that to the Behavioral Health webpage. There's a nice video on there if you all want to look at the video and see what it's about. If you don't want to read the SB 1338, I know I didn't want to read it, I have some FAQs here for you. We have some brochures. I'll leave some up here at the front in case anybody in the room is interested in learning about what this is about. Thank you.
Thank you, David.
Good morning, Supervisors. Rebecca Turner, county clerk recorder and registrar of voters. I'm here today just to give a brief update on the election. Right now, there are only 75 ballots in our office ready to count. We haven't received today's mail yet, though. We don't anticipate any of the results at this point changing, but it's not impossible, but it's unlikely. And we will be continuing to give updates each week until we certify. New this election is we cannot certify till December 3rd. So normally, we try to get done early. Even if we are done early, we are legally not allowed to certify till the 3rd. So that is when the election results will be presented.
Thank you very much and thanks for all the hard work last week from all your teams.
Thank you.
Are there other announcements? Seeing none, we'll move on to recognition and acknowledgements.
Item two, proclamation, adult services, adopt a proclamation recognizing November 11th as Veterans Day in Calaveras County.
Thank you. I will read this proclamation. This is proclamation recognizing November 11th, 2024 as Veterans Day. Whereas the 11th day of the 11th month at the 11th hour in 1918 marked the end of World War I, and whereas on November 1919, President Woodrow Wilson proclaimed November 11th as the first commemoration of Armistice Day, stating, quote, "It is fitting that the recurring anniversary of this date should commemorate with Thanksgiving and prayer and exercises designed to perpetuate peace through goodwill and mutual understanding between nations." And, "Whereas all who serve take the same oath to support and defend our country, and no veteran's service is insignificant as every function is in support of the mission." And, "Whereas we, along with millions of other Americans, can attest to the importance of their sacrifices and contributions for our freedom and security." And, "Whereas Veterans Day is set aside to thank and honor all who served honorably in our military, whether in wartime or peacetime." And, "Whereas we in Calaveras County will always remember and pay homage to our military community, both active and inactive, for their contributions, dedication, and commitment to the cause of our freedom." Are there any public comments?
Good morning, Chair Germandy, Honorable Board. My name is Ryan Casperson. I'm the Veteran Service Representative for Calaveras County. Whether you are a native of Calaveras County or a transplant like me, Calaveras to many of us is where we finally found our slice of peace and solitude after two decades of hell. During my time in the military, we were taught to walk a modest road. A road paved with strength and resiliency but guided with humbleness and humility. As veterans, we stand on the shoulders of the heroes before us so the heroes after us can stand on ours. Veterans Day to a veteran should not be a day we use to celebrate ourselves, but a day we use to celebrate our heroes. Those who put their lives on the line before and after us. Because we are the lucky ones to have walked the same company halls, slept in the same mosquito-infested swamps, mustered on the same aircraft carriers, and patrolled the same dirt roads in war-torn countries as those before us. So those after us can do the same if necessary. Yes, we are the lucky ones. To be able to stand here in front of you all today, I am lucky. To be able to hug my wife and kiss tonight, I am lucky. To be able to call my mother whenever I feel like it, I am lucky. We are the lucky ones. So thank you to my brothers and sisters for stepping up and thank you to Calaveras County for your incredible support, the veterans amongst you. My name is Staff Sergeant Ryan Casperson, U.S. Army Combat Veteran, Veteran Advocate, and Calaveras County Veteran Service Representative. I am no hero, but I walk amongst the few. Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan.[958.81][958.81](applause) If I could ask the veterans in the room to please stand and be recognized. And we're going to do something, this is not my first time doing this, but I'd like to ask everybody, tell us your name and your branch if you can. I think it's important to be recognized. Eric?
Eric. The United States Army.[986.00][986.00](laughter) You guys already got it. Don't go over the United States Army.
Robert Backing through the United States Air Force.
Jack Germandy, U.S. Army. Thank you, guys.[997.56][997.56](applause) Other public comment or comments? Let's bring it to the board first. Any comments from the board?
I think I echo the rest of the board. Thank you for your service. You know, a lot of times I thank veterans for the opportunity to make the decisions I make. More so, every decision has either a consequence or, you know, a benefit. Thank you for letting me choose my benefits and consequences throughout my life here in the United States of America. We appreciate it.
Good bet. Public comment?
Good morning, Chair Germandy, members of the board. Susan Gleason, I'm the Program Manager of Adult Services. How do you follow that? Great job, Ryan. I just want to say thank you to all of our veterans for your sacrifice and your service. But I want to specifically recognize our veteran team for the work that they do, their dedication and their commitment to this community. They work very closely with the Adult Services Unit. So we're very glad to have them and so just want to appreciate the work that they do every day. Thank you.
Thank you. Other public comment? Is there a comment online?
We have no online public comment.
Very well. I'll bring it back to the board. Is there a motion?
I'll move this item, Mr. Chair.
Second? Motion by Supervisor Toffenelli, second by Supervisor Hubbard. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries five zero. Now therefore be it proclaimed, the County of Calaveras Board of Supervisors proclaims Monday, November 11th, 2024, as Veterans Day and encourages its residents to celebrate our veterans and show their gratitude. Thank you very much.[1110.02][1110.02](applause) (inaudible) 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 Personal aside, I'd like to thank, I'd like to thank this county for how they do support veterans and the more we could bring in, the better for our organization. So thank you all. We'll move on to item number three. Madam Clerk?
Item three, proclamation, adopt a proclamation recognizing November 18th through the 22nd, 2024, as California Clerk of the Board of Supervisors Week.
Supervisor Toffenelli, you have the gavel.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This proclamation recognizing November 18th, 2022, 24, as California Clerk of the Board of Supervisors Week. Whereas California counties provide many services that are essential to the lives of Californians. And whereas the position of the Clerk of the Board of Supervisors plays an integral role in the function of California county government. And whereas the Clerk of the Board performs many legally mandated functions that protect and preserve the rights of the citizens to an open and accessible government. And whereas the work performed by the clerks of the Board is a time-honored and vital part of local government. And whereas, this next sentence. Whereas the clerk's duties of record-keeping is revered, their work among the earliest recorded on behalf of the public, and the clerks have long pledged to maintain their neutrality and the impartiality of the proceedings of government. And whereas the California Clerk of the Board of Supervisors Association, an affiliate of the California State Association of Counties, is organized to promote the principles of good government, to represent the interests of clerks of the Board with legislative bodies and other professional organizations, to encourage the development of professional growth and education, and to support the objective of all regional groups established within the association. And whereas it is most appropriate that we recognize the accomplishments of the clerks of the Board across 58 counties in the state of California. And with that, Rebecca, do you have anything you want to come up and say? You have to say something.
None of it would be possible without my staff, including this proclamation that she so nicely made sure went through. So I just have to thank my staff, Stacy in particular, for everything she does.
Is there any board comment? Jack, are your lights on?
Oh, mine is just left on, but I would also like to add my voice to it. Thank you very much for all the support that you do and it is a remarkable cadre of clerks of the Board across the state of California that really keep Boards of Supervisors in line and we appreciate it.
Supervisor Hubbard?
I just want to say I do revere the work that you do. Thank you.
Supervisor Stoppert? Yeah, I'm, absolutely. The proclamation says it all and you really do have a good staff, all of them and they're a fantastic job. Over the course of the last month and the heavy thing going on the last two weeks, guys did a fantastic job. So really proud of our Clerk of the Board and all our staff. So is there any public comment? No public comment in the room? Do we have any public comment online?
We have no public comment online.
Okay, well, I'll bring it back to the board for a motion.
I would like to move this, sir.
A motion by Supervisor Stoppert?
Duckett.
Second by Supervisor Follendorf. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes five zero. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Board of Supervisors of the County of Calaveras does herewith proclaim the week of November 18th through 22nd, 2024, as California Clerk of the Board of Supervisors Week in recognition of the high level of services bestowed upon the people of Calaveras County and the people of California by clerks of the Board. It's passed and adopted by the Board of Supervisors of the County of Calaveras, State of California, this 12th day of November, 2024.[1463.11][1463.11](applause)
(inaudible) 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 Okay. One, two, three. And three, two, one. And one more for good luck. That makes three, didn't it? (inaudible) Well, that was for good luck. You have to know that three is the problem. (inaudible)
Wow, there are types of charm.
Thank you very much, Supervisor Toffenelli. We'll move on to general public comment.
Any item of interest to the public that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the Board and is not posted on the consent or regular agendas may be addressed during the public comment period. California law prohibits the Board from taking action on any matter which is not posted on the agenda unless it's determined to be an emergency by the Board of Supervisors. If public comment is completed before the thirty-minute allotted time period, the Board may immediately move to the next order of business. If public comment is not completed during the allotted time period, it will be continued as the last item of business in order to provide an opportunity for the remainder of the comments to be heard.
Thank you. I think everybody understands the rules. We'll have three minutes. If you're addressing something that comes later in the agenda, I will ask you to stop and make those comments when we get to that specific agenda item. Who would like to speak?
Does someone have their phone on?
Good morning. Vicki Renke, Calaveras County residence. I just have a couple of questions. And I know you're going to try to stop me because it has to do with the agenda, but it doesn't have to do with a specific comment about what's on the agenda.
You have three minutes.
Yeah. So I wanted to have, hopefully through the, I know you can't answer anything, I guess, on comments, but is there no longer a cannabis control department? Everything on the agenda is under building department? When was the cannabis department, control department eliminated? And if so, why? So that's one. And then the other one is I sent an email on Friday to all the supervisors questioning why item eighteen was placed on the agenda when it was already presented and voted on at the April twenty-third Board of Supervisors. And I only heard from one supervisor, Gary Toffenelli, and no other supervisor answered. So I hope that when we get to that, that that is answered. Thank you.
Thank you. Other public comment? Any comment? Okay, we'll move forward. We'll move on to the consent agenda.
Consent agenda items are expected to be routine and non-controversial. They will be acted upon by the Board at one time without discussion. Any Board member, staff member, or interested party may request the removal of an item from the consent agenda for later discussion.
Any Board members wish to pull an item from the consent agenda?
No.
Are there members of the public in the room that would like to pull an item from the consent agenda? Online.
We have no online requests.
Very well. Is there a motion?
Still moved.
Duckett.
A motion by Supervisor Stoppa, a second by Supervisor Follendorf. All in favor?
Aye.
Carrie's five zero. All right, it's only been half hour, so I don't think we need a break. Let's move on to the regular agenda.
Item fourteen, resolution, Human Resources. Adopt a resolution reappointing Jessica Fowler as the County of Calaveras Agricultural Commissioner, Sealer of Waits and Measures for a four-year term effective November twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-four.
Very well. Is there anybody presenting on this item? Lisa, do you want to say anything?
Judy.
Or Judy, who's up?
Good morning, members of the Board. Chair Jack Garamendi, Judy Hawkins, Human Resources and Risk Director. I'm here today bringing before you the reappointment of our Commissioner Jessie Fowler. And, excuse me, I know that her direct director would like to speak to her reappointment.
Lisa.
Good morning again. Lisa Medina, Environmental Management Agency. I just wanted to convey my support for Jessie, acting as the Environmental Management Agency Administrator and Environmental Health Director and Animal Services too. So I'd like to support Jessie's appointment as the Calaveras Agricultural Commissioner and Sealer of Waits and Measures. As our ag commissioner, Jessie has been charged with the protection, well-being of Calaveras agriculture, environment, businesses, and the protection of community, public health and safety. Jessie has led her ag team and managed several programs over the past four years through a combination of public outreach, industry education enforcement, acting under the authority of the State of California, and direction under the California Department of Food and Agriculture, the Department of Pesticide Regulation, the Division of Measurement Standards, and in collaboration with several other local, state, and federal agencies. Jessie is vested in the agricultural community and has displayed dedication, commitment, and regularly attends community meetings revolving around her agricultural community to bring them awareness and services. So that is my, my, for Jessie.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions or comments from the Board? Is there a ready?
Nope. I'm sorry.
All right. Any public comment on this item? All right, see none. Is there a motion?
Sir, Jessie, thank you for all your work, including the hardwood advisory committee, working with the Fish and Game Commission here in the county, and everything you do for agriculture across there and weights and measures. So with that, there's a motion.
Motion by Supervisor Stoppa. Is there a second?
I'd like to second.
Second by Supervisor Hubbard. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie's five oh. Congratulations, Jessie. You're stuck with us for another four years. All right, item fifteen?
Item fifteen, agreement, Human Resources authorized the Board Chair to execute a services contract with Evergreen Solutions LLC in the amount not succeed, twelve thousand dollars, to generate a salary survey for county elected officials.
Judy.
Judy Hawkins, Human Resources and Risk Director. And so I'm bringing before you today the contract with Evergreen Solutions to do a review of elected official salaries. During the comprehensive class and comp study that we had finished in the summer, we, although some of the positions were looked at, not all of them, and in discussions with the administrative office, we are going to have Evergreen do a comprehensive study, which sometimes our elected department heads can be a little bit more complicated because each county, although they may be a comparable county, their positions are not apples to apples. And so sometimes the positions between, you know, assessor, tax collector, or even clerk recorder are mixed. And so it makes it very difficult for us to look at apples to apples. So that's something Evergreen will do. Evergreen will have meetings with our elected officials, and then they will reach out to the appropriate agencies to make sure that we are looking at everything carefully. They are also bringing back recommendations, looking at how other counties set salaries for the Board of Supervisors, and will also bring recommendations to the Board on, on what we can do in the future.
Questions from the Board? Supervisor Stoppa?
Just to reaffirm that, so there will be such as policies or procedures when it comes to insating salaries. As I've voiced in the past, I have issues with the Board being able to vote on their salary underneath my, my opinion, the guise of giving other representatives their, their, their raise. And so then we'll look at that structure and possibly decide on something that I would say is more equitable for the taxpayer in the county and opens it up possibly to the Board not be able to choose that they get a raise.
Right, they will bring back recommendations. They will let you know what their methodology was for those recommendations. And then it will be up to your Board to approve what you would like to see going forward.
Other questions from the Board? Very well. This action item, is there any public comment? In the room? Is there any public comment online?
We have no online public comment.
Very well, I will seek a motion.
I'll make the motion.
Move by Supervisor Hubbard. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Supervisor Follendorf. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie's five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Judy. Moving on to item sixteen.
Item sixteen, action item, OES. Receive a presentation and approve the Calaveras County Council of Government's two thousand and twenty-three evacuation and access needs assessment and preparation plan.
Eric.
Good morning, Board. We're not going to be doing the presentation again. We did that last board meeting. So we brought back Project Scoping and Letter to the COG to address what was requested to be added in there. Would you let me go over? You guys have a chance to look at it already?
You could go over it just briefly.
Okay. So we came up with defensible space clearing, which was identified within the study, but was not listed on the project priorities. So we went ahead and added that. Defensible space clearing, Highway twenty-sixth, the Sheep Ranch Road, east of Highway forty-nine. Basically, you know, we'll scope out all hazard trees, defensible clearing spaces, and potential for shoulder improvements for traffic. Estimated cost would be about ten point five. Of course, that's a ballpark figure. The beautiful thing of this is we can apply for multiple style grants and different phases and all that. So that's what we expect it to cost for the total northern area up there of the county. And now we can, we've asked that the COG add this in without numbering of the other projects so that it's bullet formed and infers no priority.
Thank you. I appreciate that. We worked together on this, and I believe that this now has our most vulnerable communities involved. So, questions from the Board? Public comment? Public comment online?
We have no online public comment.
So Eric, the motion you're seeking is to approve the evacuation plan with, as amended?
Yes, sir.
Very well. Is there a motion?
I still move.
Moved by Supervisor Toffenelli?
I'll second it.
Second by Supervisor Stoppa. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie's five zero. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Board.
Appreciate working with you on this. Okay, moving on to item seventeen. We are moving along today, guys.
Item seventeen, informational item, economic and community development. Receive a presentation from the Calaveras County Economic and Community Development Department regarding two thousand and twenty-three through two thousand and twenty-four activities.
Kathy?
Good morning, Chair. Honorable Board, Kathy Galino, Economic and Community Development. I have a presentation I'd like to provide to you.
Do you need a second setup?
No.
Okay.
Well, good morning. So I have my annual update to the Board. I'm Kathy Galino, the Economic and Community Development Director. And I will get going. So the first thing I want to share is the mission and goals of economic and community development. One of my primary missions, as you know, is to work with our business community in helping them succeed, to grow, to stay, and also to attract new businesses and new industries. In doing that, I often act as a facilitator between the businesses and permitting agencies. I also assist in identifying vacant and unused properties and trying to find fits and matches for businesses that are wanting to possibly expand or come to Calaveras, trying to match them with an appropriate location. As the Economic and Community Development Director, I also look for public-private partnerships and opportunities such as co-locating compatible businesses at county facilities. We also identify target industries such as meat processing, biomass, composting, and new businesses that complement our existing businesses, especially in our tourism and recreation industries. Additionally, I work with our nonprofit and community-based organizations by assisting them with funding resources, permitting, and management strategies for their success. So I'd like to talk a little bit about the grants that we're working on right now. The first one is the permanent local housing allocation, which I spoke about a few weeks ago, and very thankful that the Board will be reallocating approximately seven hundred and fifty thousand, so that's six hundred and twenty for the next two years. And then probably an additional hundred and fifty to two hundred thousand for the final year. It'll just depend when they close their rolls on the seventy-five dollar per transfer of property. Excited that we'll be looking at workforce housing opportunities. And I'm currently in the process of amending our five-year plan to reflect the additional opportunity for workforce housing. And that will be before you on the November twenty-sixth board meeting. Also, the Regional Early Access Planning, or REAP two point oh, grant funding is approximately one point seven four million. So it's a significant amount of funding for pre-development, incentivizing development for workforce housing. I'm currently working on developing some guidelines, and will be bringing back that back to the Board as well as the Strategic Planning Committee. Next, we have the Community Change Grant that was recently submitted. It's fourteen million dollars to fund improvements at various facilities throughout the county, both county-owned facilities and not county-owned facilities in the event of an emergency disaster, helping to strengthen those facilities with solar, being able to be powered during emergency situations when the power may not be available by PG&E, providing showers and bathrooms, and those types of facilities for our community in the event of any community need. I've been awarded a four thousand dollar grant from PG&E for promoting their economic development power rate, which is a twelve percent reduction in power for certain industries and businesses that are eligible. Next is the California Jobs First, which was formerly the SURF. I'm excited to share that we are well into our implementation of the planning and are now moving towards the catalyst funding. So the catalyst funding is very exciting because it's fourteen million dollars for our region. And again, it's a seven-county region, so it's pretty big. But it does include things for developing higher earning wages for our employers, our employees, as well as energy resiliency, climate resiliency, food stability. There's quite a bit there. And one of the things that we're looking at in a region with our Mother of Job Training Work Development Board is developing a training path and apprenticeship for aircraft maintenance and also potentially for pilots. We found that in our early surveys, in looking what the needs are, that this was something that the entire region, actually the whole state, suffers from a shortage of aircraft mechanics for general aviation. So that's one of the fun projects there. There are others. So lastly, I'm working with Len DeGroot, our IT Director, on the LEDA grant, which is a local area technical assistance grant. We're closing that grant up where we identified our priority areas in Calaveras County for broadband deployment. We're anxiously awaiting to hear on our federal funding account. I see that we were not awarded this month. So there's always December, Supervisor Garamendi. Hang in there. Which is a very large grant. It's a thirty point eight million dollar grant for actually deploying about forty miles of broadband in those areas that we targeted earlier. So it's a really important grant. And Golden State Connect Authority is our partner agency on that and is the one who is taking the lead on that. Next, we have business assistance. So this is where I like to work directly with our businesses. I was able to coordinate four technical pre-application meetings for permit submittals. That's working with our various departments at the county level as well as our fire districts and our utility providers. Over the course of the spring and summer this year, I worked with GoBiz and the Small Business Development Centers out of San Joaquin. And we hosted monthly business workshops, business resource workshops, where we helped them identify their needs, their location, staff, funding opportunities. We worked with ten new businesses, startups, and two businesses that were expanding. And we held those workshops throughout the county. We had them here in San Andreas, Angels Camp, Valley Springs, Copperopolis. And I believe there was one in Murphy's as well. Been working on streamlining the film permitting process and having a concierge service so that our filmmakers or filmmakers that want to come to Calaveras and film have an easy process for moving forward with filming permits, identifying what their needs will be, how extensive the filming may be, where to film, how to film, and to be a good partner. Also, the business license process, we're still working on automating the business license process so that it'll be more seamless and easy to use. And then the last one that was just recently completed is a pre-application permit process, which is now online. People can call to make an appointment, can email us. And it's a great way to really streamline the permitting process. So if there's a developer coming in, whether it's commercial, industrial, or residential, they can, I can get, we can get all the folks in the room. So if there's any kind of red flags or any issues, we can identify it right in front before they spend a bunch of money on design engineering and all these things and then realize our project won't work. So it's a really great thing, and the Planning Department is lead on that. Also, we host utility coordination meetings, or we participate in utility coordinating meetings with CCWD and all the utility providers to identify capital improvement projects, ways to leverage funding, grant opportunities, and really targeting what our needs are in the county. And over the last year, I provided over fifty businesses with technical assistance, whether it's signing assistance, whether it's permit assistance. So that's been a great, a great fun thing. So on the community development side, as you know, I'm now housed in the Planning Department, which is wonderful. They're great folks and happy to work with them. I've been working with, you know, the general plan implementation. There's a lot of pieces to that document, as you all know. So working on the zoning code amendments that was before the Board in July this year and, you know, identifying some tweaks that might need to be made in the future. But working on the housing element, especially for broadband, or for workforce housing. Sorry, I get broadband stuck in there every once in a while. For our workforce housing, also other opportunities such as open space, parks and recreation, and all these wonderful things. I enjoy working on special projects, attending a lot of special events like our health fairs, our business association meetings, our Preparedness Annex, and county beautification projects. So lots on special projects. Also, providing grant writing assistance to our nonprofits. So again, part of my community development hat is to work with our nonprofits and our community organizations and helping them be, you know, successful and funded and learn how to write grants. And so I've done a series of workshops with our nonprofits on how to write grants to be successful. Let's see, Parks and Recreation, oh wait, coordinate, okay, so I spoke about this a little bit. Projects, project coordination with utilities by our districts and county agencies. That really rolls into the pre-application process that we just launched last month. So I already spoke about that. Parks and Recreation Commission, I'm the liaison. And also excited to be getting close to getting our master plan. Woo-hoo. So it looks like we will see a draft of that later this month at the Parks and Rec Commission meeting. And then broadband deployment, again, it's a community, it's a life safety issue. So a lot of the hats I wear kind of go back and forth. So on our comprehensive economic development strategy, it's implementation time and also tying that into the Board's strategic plan. So workforce development is a very big priority, and we're finding that that ties directly to the housing policy that we're working on and trying to get workforce housing constructed. Next, promoting our historic and cultural resources and natural resources. And we're doing that through various channels, both with our Parks Master Plan as well as our California Jobs First funding. California Jobs First funding, building collaborative partnerships, infrastructures and utilities. Let me get to my notes. Business growth workshops, workforce development on the Workforce Development Board for Motherlode Job Training and partnering with local, state, and federal agencies. Through the Strategic Planning and Finance Committee, we've been able to identify development opportunities, and we'll be compiling a list of opportunities for the board to consider moving forward along with the guidance that will be developed on how to disburse the $1.7 million for incentives for development. I appreciate, I appreciate the building collaborative partnerships, I appreciate building collaborative partnerships along a whole range of different community organizations, regulatory agencies, partnerships, states, state and local agencies. And I feel it's really important that we continue those partnerships with our Visitors Bureau, with our chambers, with our business associations. Above all, it's individual businesses and community organizations that are important to grow in this county and grow for ourselves and having a healthy economy. So now we get to the 2024-25 goals and direction. So my goals for 2425 are to continue providing business assistance, resources, incentives, permitting, and funding to our business communities, conduct business and community education and training activities, apply and administer grant funds. And here I want to pause for just a second because there's already quite a bit on my plate. So being strategic and maybe identifying other grant opportunities and other partnerships that could help implement. We get all these grants, we've got to figure out how to spend the money. So we want to make sure we do so appropriately and make sure we have the staffing to do so. Continuing collaboration with agencies and developers to increase our workforce housing. Again, we have a lot of opportunities before us, and I think we can actually make something really great happen. Support planning with housing and open space and cultural resource goals, implement the Parks Master Plan if it is, you know, brought over to economic development and planning, promote infrastructure improvements, both broadband and utilities such as sewer and water, invest in business retention and attraction and marketing plans. I will continue to try and find funding, as I don't want this to be a general fund draw, on getting our marketing plan done for Calaveras County, and develop market opportunities, biomass, food, meat, food processing, manufacturing, recreation, and tourism, and other industries. And so now I would like to ask the board to give me their input.
Superior Judge Stopro, Jack, to lead us off.
If you don't mind, sir, Kathy, thank you. You say you wear many hats, you have your hand on a lot of different poles also. The, with CSEDD and the Motherlode Job Training Agencies, multiple years being chairs on both of those, Kathy's been integral in moving forward with it. With the flux in multiple counties, she's the one consistent Economic Development Director throughout those organizations. We'll go on to the Workforce Development Board underneath Motherlode Job Training Board of Directors. When it comes to getting the money for the SEDs, grants that have gone from that end into broadband, working with the other, the other side through, through RCRC and everything, she, you know, and doing in-kind portion work to get us there in the past, you know, and I hope these are all things that with the changes that we made to our structure in the county, we can consider continuing to move forward because we could have never gotten it done without her, and I appreciate it. And you're highly valued at, for my part on that, and you, you know, my, year after year after working through these with you, my, my, my respect and appreciation of your value builds for me every, every time we get something else done like this, and, you know, and it's, and it's getting done better every time. So thank you, Kathy.
Thank you.
Other questions? Superior Judge Harper?
I would just like to add ditto and say thank you very much for the film permitting, and thank you to administration for getting that through because it's made life very, much easier. Also, thank you for just always being bright on the other end of the telephone when I have a constituent that has an issue. Thank you.
I will add, I can't imagine what else I could add to your list. You seem to have covered pretty much anything.
I tried to be intuitive.
Superior Judge Toffenelli?
Yeah, thank, thank you, Kathy, for all your years, and you put in a lot of work. I had a lot of headaches, and you've continued to move forward. So thank you very much for everything.
Thank you.
Okay. Any public comment? This is, this is not an action item, but we'll take a public comment if there's something to be made.
Yeah, I'm pretty impressed. I like to know what 10 new businesses were.
That you mentioned earlier on.
I have a list back in my office.
I'm sorry, we're not in dialogue. You could have a rebuttal.
Oh, sorry. It was just awesome. I was thinking 10 new businesses. I thought people were leaving. It's good that people are coming.
Thank you. Other public comment? Seeing none. Anything you want to wrap up with Kathy? And thank you for your call.
No, thank you. I have my cellphone always with me, as you know. I'm available. Come by, see me, and I'm happy to work with our businesses and our community. Thank you.
And I think she'll be happy to probably chat with you and tell you the specifics after the meeting.
I just wanted, just clear on input, you know, I do appreciate the work Kathy does, and with the restructuring, I hope we will consider letting her continue work with the other counties and the capacity that she has. I'm sure that's the intent, but I just want it to be made clear because I can't do it without her.
No, that's definitely the intent. Kathy has been very integral, as you mentioned, to both the Jobs First program and the Motherlode Job Training Program. So we do intend for her to continue those relationships and all the other relationships that she's built on behalf of Calaveras. So thank you, Kathy.
Thank you very much. Kathy, thank you, and we'll take care of answering questions. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, can we take a five-minute break?
We could take a five-minute break. Let's get back here at 10:05. There'll be a few more minutes in five.
Okay.
All right.
Welcome back. We move on to item 18.
Item 18, action item, Building 1, introduce and waive first reading of an ordinance repealing Chapter 9.22 of Calaveras County Ordinance Code related to cannabis background clearance badges. 2, find ordinance not a project or exempt from SEQA. And 3, authorize a summary publication of the ordinance.
Thank you. Done.
Good morning, Chairman, members of the board. Doug Oliver, chief building official. I want to start this item with something that I don't think you've heard from me yet, and that is an apology. There's some relevant information I should have put in this board memo, a couple of dates, and some information that was shared between me and your board moving up to this meeting that probably would have helped knock down a few of the questions from the public and for members of your board. So I apologize for not biting that information in my haste to get this to you before the end of the year. It just slipped my mind, so I will endeavor to do more to be more K.O. and virus-sensitive. That being said, what I'd like to do is briefly go through those items. As your board is aware, September 12th of 2023, your board heard a presentation from the Building Department regarding the cannabis program, and in that was a question about what to do with the cannabis background clearance badges, and it was sentiment of your board that I should bring this back to have it repealed. Now, what I didn't add to this document was that April of this year, we did bring it forward to your board, and it was voted down 3-2. However, on May 14th, your board expressed an interest to bring that back, and you directed me on that day to bring it back. While I was preparing to bring that back, however, we, in our daily inspections of those cannabis sites, identified a handful of bad actors, and we determined approximately 20% of the cannabis industry was out of compliance on several items. And I'm not talking about simply, you know, fire extinguisher being out of place or something like that. There were substantial issues. And so I brought, or actually, I came to your board during staff announcements on July 13th and let your board know that we were going to give you monthly updates, and I didn't feel comfortable bringing anything to your board until such time as the cannabis industry demonstrated that they had a willingness to comply at a greater degree. Now, I did proceed with those monthly updates, and we did go out and do everything we could to encourage the cannabis industry. And I will say that the support of your board and also, to a large degree, the support of the good actors in the cannabis industry, we saw a huge turnaround in relatively short order. It took about two months, and I was able to send an email to your board, September 20th of this year, to identify that we've turned that around to approximately 2% out of compliance. Everyone else had gained substantial compliance, and that I felt comfortable in moving forward. In that time, we also identified a few other issues that were causing complications. We were able to begin reconvening our cannabis meetings to try and get a feel for what things we could bring to your board in the future. And at this point, I'd like to just give you some basic information. Cannabis badges currently, we have 1,025 that are currently badged. Now, that was increased dramatically just in the last month because it was coming up on harvest season, and we had a lot of people that were employed by temporary labor companies from the Central Valley, which is kind of a shift from what we've seen, you know, five years ago. In order to be efficient and save money, the temporary help is being brought in from these companies, and they are there for short duration, a week, maybe two, and they're, they're back down the road to some other, or some agricultural commodity in the Central Valley. The hardship that we have determined based on direct communication with these folks is that these temporary organizations employ a lot of people who are under work visa, who are seeking permanent legal status in the United States, and if they are seeking that legal status, if the federal government does a background check and finds that they are working in a commodity that is not legal federally, they may not be able to qualify for legal citizenship. Now, on the other side of that, you can still hire your labor, but those people just, you know, they can't participate, so get somebody else. You could make that argument. However, this is America, and if you are seeking citizenship and you want to work in this industry, the argument could be made that you should be afforded that opportunity. That being said, I just want to say that ultimately, the only complaint that I have heard from the public is a worry about the quality of life, and the urgency ordinance, rightly so, highlighted a bunch of things that we should not do moving forward. And there was a lot of, it was a huge influx of people who were outside the county. It was, it was essentially a gold rush. Everybody wanted to come in, everyone wanted to stake their claim. There was a lot of work going on ahead of the applications being approved. Huge difference from where we are now. The cannabis badges, I think, were necessary initially. Moving forward, it looks like the wiser decision from the board was limiting the amount of applicants, because if you, if you just do rough numbers and math, if you had 600 applications, we're trying to break ground ahead of approval, and they employ five people, you've got 3,000 people who, most of them are not going to be from this county. However, given the permit scheme that we have, we currently have 88, let's round that to 100. With the economy right now, the price of that material, you're going to see maybe two to three employees, two of them being the owners of the businesses. Most of those are from this county, and many of them are employing people from this county. Now, once again, the seasonal work isn't from this county, but that's short duration, and then they're done. But if you look at those numbers, if you have 100 permits and you only have three employees, that's 300 people operating. So the difference is night and day as far as the volume of people from outside the county or the volume of potential issues in relation to, to crime predominantly. So I don't see that, that the cannabis badges being removed is going to affect that substantially. I have talked to Sheriff Whiting briefly about this. She shares our previous sheriff's comments. They have no concerns about repealing this, and at this time, I'd ask if you have any questions.
Thank you. Questions from the board? Sheriff, are you on board?
Good morning. Thank you very much for the opportunity to comment on it myself. I am not opposing the repeal of the ordinance. It has no effect on our ability to continue to investigate the illegal operations, which we will continue to do. Given the framework of the legal industry in our county and the regulatory authority of that industry falling under the Division of Cannabis Control, which does fall under the Building Department, they are best suited to tell us if the program is working and still needed or not. I did have several citizens reach out, and I will always have a shared concern on quality of life issues, even if there are not criminal issues. We at the sheriff's office were big proponents of this badge program when we started, just as, just as Doug outlined. That was when we were still trying to figure out the industry. We were flooded with things. We wanted to ensure that we had a way to regulate it, and that gave us that, that framework, and it was needed and it was useful at the time. The county has now had several years to work through that process. Although much of the regulation for the legal industry does fall under the Division of Cannabis Control and not with the sheriff's office, we are still, our marijuana enforcement team supervisors participate in the working group. So when any of these topics do come up regarding concerns or discussion on possible effects on the public safety in our county, we are still part of that. We are a stakeholder in those discussions. So we do regularly, regularly talk to Doug and the members of Cannabis Control about it. It's my understanding that much of the opposition that you may hear to repealing the ordinance is out of a lot of just concern and fear that if we do reduce the scrutinization on workers, it may attract some bad actors or criminals and think that they may have a better avenue to come up and, and become workers up here. So like I said, I do, I do share in concerns, but we can't base everything we do on fears and on what-if scenarios with no evidence to back it up. So if people are going to break the law, they're going to, they're going to do it regardless, and we will go after criminals that do so. So if any of that comes to fruition, you know, I would just ask that the Division of Cannabis Control and my office will as well. If, if you guys repeal it today, we will closely monitor, and if there are any negative, unanticipated causations, that we bring this back before the board in six months and review it with, with amendments to further rectify it, much as, as we've had to do over, over the years of, once we started the, the legal industry. Some things work, some things don't. We can't anticipate every causation of our decisions, but if, if that changes and we're seeing a negative effect on our citizens, then we bring it back before the board. So that's, that's my opinion.
Thank you, Sheriff. Very well. Questions from the board? Questions from the board? There's no questions from the board. I'll open this up for public comment. There are two cannabis items on the agenda today. I would ask that you address 922 in your comments rather than the taxation issue. And if you could queue up, it makes it go quicker. So come on up, sir.
I'm Richard Golan, District 5 resident, and I would like to respectfully ask the board of supervisors to retain this current provision for the background checks and the badges. Our previous speaker from, I believe it was the Building Department, did say that there had been some bad actors and indeed I think there could be some in the future. And I think it's a matter of public safety. I think that we, ordinary citizens, would like to feel assured that we do not have any potential crime problems where we, near where we live, work, or travel due to cannabis grow sites. And so I think it's a matter of public safety for us and I think it's a matter of public safety for any of our government officials that may find a need to visit any of the grow sites and it would be an extra assurance that they will not be ambushed or assaulted. So I ask you to retain this provision in the law.
Thank you.
I'm Jennifer Stewart and I echo everything he just said, especially since Doug just said there was a 20% problem, less than a year ago, with severe, he didn't say severe, he said considerable, problems. And to reduce it down to 2% within six months because of the industry that is kind of monitoring itself, what happens when those people all of a sudden don't have the requirements to have a badge initiation process go through? Will people have to follow through who they are? I don't understand if the, it's now becoming less employees that they need to do, it costs less because we've streamlined the process. Why give it up? If it's doing a job, continue it. It's just, if you don't continue it, then the influx of bad actors will come in and things will go out, we'll have exactly what Sheriff DiBasilio said. There will be people with a bad element that show up. And those of us who live out in the hinterlands by ourselves, it's a considerable situation. I've been broken into a number of times because I'm out there where they live and I hate it. I can't have my grandkids there. I mean, we've had the same conversation over and over and over, is that my quality of life has changed because this board has brought in marijuana industry and I'm just, I'm so against the whole thing and it just keeps incrementally pushing back against what we all stood up here and said we didn't want. And you guys don't give a damn. We don't care about public protection, public, I mean, I just get so frustrated sometimes when I just, people aren't being heard. It's like we have to have a huge roomful of people before you even understand. We send you emails and if it's, things are going like, it's status quo for a while, it gets quiet and then it creeps back up. 20% of non-compliance? Thank you.
Speaker. She was, sir, she was standing up there before you.
So I think, my name's Colin, Wright and Jack, Own Final Touch Wellness, up off Fallen Road. I think what a lot of the issue was, why people weren't going to reissue their badges, was because we thought it was disappearing. So a lot of my employees, which are full-time, 90% of my employees live in this county, their kids go to school here, was that they thought the badges were going to go away. So nobody reissued. It happened to me too. So I think a lot of that percentage, what he's talking about, was that a lot of people thought the badges were going away, so nobody came in to purchase the badges again. And then, once everybody found out the badges stayed on, was when everybody came back in to get their badges again. So, I mean, that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hi. Dina Morris. I would just like to say that I really wish you would not repeal this. My community in particular, you're all aware of, is finally back to a wonderful community where the kids can walk around and feel safe. Parents are letting the kids ride their horses around the community. And we have a very large commercial grow at one entrance of the community. And I would hate for us to go backwards again and people to feel unsafe because we have criminals coming into our area. I'd rather us be proactive rather than reactive. And by repealing this, it's going to put us in a state of reactive. Now, we're going to become the experiment again to see if the badges really did help keep people safe and neighborhoods safe. I really hope that you reconsider if you're thinking about taking this away and keep it in place and keep our community safe. Copperopolis is only 30 minutes from Stockton and we've had repeated gang member activity out there up until the last ordinance was passed. It finally calmed down. And I feel like if this gets repealed, we do have the probability of the gang members coming back up into our area. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker.
Hi, Board. My name is Elaine St. John and I live in Copperopolis. I actually have a badge. I'm very proud of this badge. It was awarded to me by the Lyon County Sheriff, Brad Pope, when I helped him. I think this is a problem for the sheriffs if you look at what Prop 36 just did and how that could possibly impact the budget there. So, you know, there could be saturation campaigns if we find that there are gang members that are coming up, the bad players. I work at Town Square and I can't imagine, I'm a real estate agent as well. So I think this is going to affect my industry. If I'm in Town Square and there's some people that come over from the grow that is, you know, at the entrance of the county and, you know, they look kind of disheveled, that could be a problem for us. It could be a safety problem, but it could also hurt our economy. So I really am in favor of keeping badges. The background checks is very important. We need to know who the good people are and who the bad people are. There's nothing wrong with that. And I know that there has been kind of a shift going toward being a little bit more lenient, but you're talking about drugs. That's what this is. And these are drug dealers. Some of them are good and some of them are bad. But, you know, you can't rely on people being good unless you have a good safety net. And we need a good safety net. That's what we're asking for. Just protect us, keep our safety. That's the bottom line. Thank you.
Thank you. Other public comment? If you'd like to speak, if you could queue up, that would make it faster. Vicki, please, come on.
Yes, Vicki Ranky, Calaveras County. I do want to just start off again, repeat, oh, repeat, but there's new people that maybe forgot about this, but in 2016, the Calaveras County voters voted for Measure D. And I'm still wondering why this never affected what happened here in our county. But the vote was for, this is what it said, Shellin Initiative, measure to regulate the cultivation of cannabis for commercial and non-commercial activities within authorized zones in the uncorporated areas of Calaveras County be adopted. That was asked of our voters, they voted no. They didn't want it. I don't know how then, because of this vote, we ever got marijuana in here, except that three supervisors decided we needed a marijuana business here because we were going to make so much money. So anyway, I wanted to remind people of this one as we move forward and keep talking about marijuana in our county. And you can see, people came out today because they're baffled by all this too. Why do we keep bringing this up? Why are we streamlining this down to the point where we don't even have a cannabis control department coming to report anymore? We have our building department person, who I know oversees that, but shouldn't we be calling it a cannabis control policy? And then, there were a couple of things that were said about the 20% compliance. You know, we're five years into this business and people can't comply yet? It's just amazing to me. So, again, that was kind of, and who, I would like to know what the, what was not being complied to and who were they that were not complying? And the illegals coming into work for the seasonal work? Well, you know, maybe this is a good place for all these illegals that need homes to come and live in Calaveras County, which, again, the people are not happy with illegal immigration in the state of California. And again, you know, what has been said already, I 100% agree and I'm not going to have to repeat that, but the badge ordinance was for safety. And I understand where Sheriff Whiting is coming from. If we all recall, the Sheriff's Department put together this wonderful program to check people who were coming into Calaveras County to grow, to work on marijuana, the drug marijuana. And it was taken away from them? And I remember being in the room, realizing the sheriffs were not happy about that. They were just dis- oh yeah, you don't need to be.
Vicki, time.
Oh, sorry. So anyway, I hope you keep that in mind.
Thank you. Mark, you have three minutes.
Morning, Board. Mark Bolger, Rimrock Farms. I'd like to echo the sentiment of a lot of people in the room. We're all concerned about public safety. You know, I've got a wife, young child, another one on the way. We all want our community to be safe. Cannabis farm workers that wake up before the crack of dawn and bust their butts all day are not the people that we need to worry about. I've got the complete faith in the Sheriff's Department that they're going to get the bad guys. People that are employed on these farms legally are not who we're worried about. Take that and set that to the side. The landscape's a lot different in our economy than it was five years ago, not just for cannabis. I'll try not to conflate this agenda item with the next, but, you know, obviously we're looking at a huge price reduction. We're not looking at the margins that were there before. It's more akin to a conventional agricultural operation and one thing that we as operators need to do is be efficient. And I am very proud that we employ as many locals as we possibly can, but as any agricultural producer knows, there's certain times of the year where you need to get people in there, get the crop planted, get the crop harvested, processed, and then they're on to the next The process with the background check, it's cumbersome. I mean, it's obviously shown that it can be effective, but, you know, the county's losing money on it. I believe I read from the staff report that it was 6,000 brought in, 20,000 spent. I mean, as a taxpayer and a fee payer for this program, that doesn't sit too well with me. I think that, you know, again, the retention rate in any business these days, and, you know, in my non-cannabis business, we see the same thing. If I had to go through a whole DOJ background check process for every person that was hired and then in 30 days they decide they want to go somewhere else, it's very, very difficult. So I agree with the staff's report on this. I agree with the Division of Cannabis Control and the Sheriff's Department. I think that it served its purpose, had its time and place. We're past that and I definitely think that repealing it would be beneficial to the industry and the community at large. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker.
Chair Garamendi, members of the board, good morning. Thank you for the opportunity to be heard. My name is Zach Travon. I'm a local attorney. I've been working in this county for about five, six years now and currently represent about seven different cannabis farms. Really, when we talk about cannabis regulation, we talk about pragmatic decision to regulate and control an area of commerce that is ubiquitous throughout California. Cannabis was here in Calaveras County prior to the enactment of the regulations to control it and to derive a benefit from it and to take those financial benefits and allocate towards them enforcement to make the community safer. Where I commend the Division of Cannabis Control and your board has been the ability to modify ordinance that are no longer pragmatic and find solutions to maintain the viability of the cannabis industry as a legal-going concern that contributes beneficially to the county. Now, six years down the line, this is an established program. I have farms who have been completely without any regulatory violations and I've had farms that have had significant regulatory violations that we've had to work through and not all of them have gone through that. There have been permits, clients that I represent, that have been revoked and that is a testament to the manner of enforcement and the consistency that the Division of Cannabis Control has exhibited throughout this time that they've been in place here in the county. I'm from Stockton, born and raised, I have my office there. We are the most dangerous city in the United States on several rankings. We are also abound by agriculture. We have zero cannabis farms, outdoor cannabis farms, okay? I can tell you right now, the crime and the issues that we have in Stockton have zero to do with the migrant labor that get up every day before the sun is up to go work an honest day and feed their families. There are no gang members coming up to work on cannabis farms for eight-plus hours a day to come here and do business. So the same issues that we're experiencing with compliance and the same issues that the county is experiencing with enforcement, it's an ineffectual policy. These farms are now established, we've been able to weed out predominantly the bad actors here. This is an ineffectual provision in this ordinance and I would support the repeal of this today for all of these reasons. It's losing money, it's an impediment to commerce, it's difficult to comply with and it's difficult to enforce. It makes no sense to continue this. I appreciate your thoughtful consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Hertcher, come on down.
Good morning, Board. So I'm trying to run a business and this makes it way more difficult and it's kind of feeding into the reputation that Calaveras has, so I think we should really get rid of it. I remember, I think Burrito was still on the board, you guys directed staff the first time, Doug wasn't around, it was Greg, said get rid of the badges. It wasn't working, it didn't matter. We have temporary employees, there's no point in background checking. Nobody does it to any normal business. We're basically normal businesses. We all want to have that. Just treat us like normal businesses, we're running businesses. This is like an onerous, ridiculous process. And I agree with some people, you know, I don't want to smell a bunch of weed in the Town Square because that's where I go to buy my meth and so, you know, just can't be doing that. So, you know, it just, but it's ridiculous. Everybody's just looking for whatever they want to say about it. They hate weed, so they're going to say whatever they can throw at us all. But, you know, it's costing the county money, it's costing me money, we're struggling, county's struggling, it's just ridiculous. So get rid of this thing. And it's been four years, I think, or five years since I first told the staff to get rid of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Al?
Good morning, Board. Al Segala, Calaveras County Taxpayer Association. And I'd like to, one of the things our group does is support the Constitution and we encourage everyone to learn about it and because in that document is a solution to a lot of the problems that we have. The Fifth and Fourteenth Amendments specify and identify human rights, believe it or not. It stated their life, liberty, and property. And then again, in the Fourteenth Amendment, life, liberty, and property. Can anyone doubt we now have a purpose for constitutional government and for the United States? It's to support life, liberty, and property. Does anybody have an argument against that? Well, maybe some, but I don't think it'll hold water very long. So if we look at this ordinance, we have to look at the history of regulation in the United States. We had alcohol prohibition. And I admit, I drink wine, but I think that people learned because of the implementation of prohibition that it wasn't working and it was bringing about a worse result. It was creating an underground economy, actually probably created mafia from all I know. So we have a really complicated can of worms in front of us now and we're trying to figure out what government can do to make it better. What government can do to make it better? Maybe we ought to revert back to basic- Maybe we ought to revert back to basic responsibility to the Constitution and unwind ourselves from this enterprise. There's so many things already in place as far as to correct problems, like when they harvest the buds, there's ways to stop the odor. I mean, it's not, it doesn't take brain science for that. And as far as people coming in, rather than try to detect their character with a badge or something, why not let the already instituted law take place? Take place.
Al?
Thank you.
Thank you. Other public comment in the room? Is there any online?
We have no online public comment.
Very well, I'll bring it back to the board. Questions?
With your permission, I'd like to answer a few of the questions that came forward.
Certainly.
Ultimately, the concern is, how do we keep crime from happening? Well, the badge program doesn't prevent that, because people who have badges can still commit crime. They can still violate health and safety regulations. Unwittingly, sometimes they do. Knowingly, sometimes they do. This industry is no different than any other industry. However, there's one exception to that, and that is that in your board's wisdom, you made it very, very easy to revoke permits for not complying with many different layers of regulation. And that's been used to great effect in the last year and a half. And I think that, and I will say once again, the good actors in the cannabis industry will always support what we're doing, which has been since your board has delegated this authority to, is educate first, then enforce. And we've been educating for several years. The training wheels have come off. They made a great point. It's been five years. Correct. We have been educating for five years. We're now in enforcement mode. Everyone who knows the rules and wanted to be good actors, they're playing by the rules. If they don't know the rule, we give it to them. Now it is, you have 10 days or we revoke your license. Or we have a warrant. They secured cannabis. Here's your code enforcement notice. Here's your revocation. You can't grow in the county anymore. This is a working model. The enforcement tools we have for the rest of the ordinance are effective, and they're fast, and they have worked in taking care of some pretty bad situations that you ask any grower that heard about it on the wind, they say, "Yeah, that made us look bad. We don't need that here." And it is working, and we will continue to enforce in that manner. The training wheels are off. This badge scenario didn't help with that. It was everything else your board did in the ordinance to make it effective enforcement. And we can stand behind that.
Thank you. Let's try to stop her. Why don't you leave it there?
Okay. Unfortunately, I get more than three minutes.
You can have as much time as you need.
Mr. Oliver, thank you for your work that you're doing. You know, we've had many discussions. I've been here, whether on this side of the dais or the other side of the dais, you know, since 2015. And I was solidly against the original urgency ordinance and how it was crafted because of the problems it caused. I thought there was a better way, and you brought it up. There is a better way, and we passed that, from my perspective, in 2020? 2019? 2020? But we passed that, and that filter has done us good when it comes to bringing in the good actors, the ones we're dealing with today. Doug, your scrutiny, you're very intelligent. I have to dial you back sometimes from my perspective, because you start overthinking things and complicating them. And then sometimes, you know, you dial it back after a minute, and it's like we come to an agreement and, you know... But that's a testament to you. You take your job seriously. You're very intelligent. Sometimes we can not go with a complicated equation and start using addition and subtraction. The sheriff, I appreciate the job they do. I was talking to a couple of school officials and a deputy the other day, and the best job we can all do, even as a board, is, it says on the cars, protect and serve. Reacting to a crime is the sheriff's department's job. But if they're able to prevent a crime before it happens, they're doing their job correctly. And that was the thought we had in our minds when we brought forward this badge system to give the tools, because we created, the board created, along with people that crafted this ordinance, the badge process, not the sheriff's department. The sheriff's department had input. We originally, during the urgency ordinance, 14, over 1,400 applications were in. Not all were approved, but the volume was substantial. Of those, at the end, there's probably 400-plus in good standing, meaning that even if they weren't doing things right, the process hadn't gotten to them to tell them that they were no longer allowed when the ban was approved. Then we came forward with this ordinance now that we're dealing with, which through different filters and figuring out those that were willing to play, play the game properly and were in good standing, brought that potential number down right around 200, I believe, below 200 potential areas, which fell within REIR. This is a monetary drain. The owners of every cannabis farm by the state and our ordinance are still required, because they were required by the state, to get their background checked. So the top person in each one, the owner of each one of those organizations, is still required to go through that, potentially putting in a position where they're not wanting to hire people, they aren't going to steal from them. Prior to this, from 2017 to 2019, when the ban was in, when there was just bad actors out there working, I saw more headlines of people coming from out of the area to steal marijuana from illegal grows and people getting assaulted and guns being involved than I've seen since then, since we've brought back forward this. I see pragmatic was brought up. I agree with that. This is a pragmatic process where we're losing money to filter something. Someone brought up that the illegals are coming out to work. These people are coming up on work visas, and what else did you say, Doug? They're, you know, they're in the process of gaining citizenship.
Right.
So they're, they are the ones following the process. They aren't the ones that are coming across the border and seeking asylum.
Correct.
And not having that. So that's saying a tremendous amount. That's, there's a difference. And these are people who are willing to, and if they, if they screw up during that process, they lose their status. So I'm in support of moving forward on this. I have not seen the filter come up with any results that are saying that it's needed to the extent that we're using it in the last so many years. And as with anything in life, whether it's marijuana grow, whether it's a bus driver, whether it's, you know, a politician, there's good and bad everywhere. And, you know, we all have to be alert and astute on those people. Thank you, Al. Life, liberty, and...
Property.
Property. Are all on our mind. But part of that, that's a double-edged blade in my mind. It's not just an open door. The Jefferson Movement always says, "Don't tread on me." Well, you know what? Part of "don't tread on me" is not letting the poop run off your property onto my property. So we do have to keep a certain amount of rules in place, but this one, I feel we have moved to a point where I feel comfortable enough to move beyond it at this time, unless I hear something different to change my mind coming up before I make the decision. Okay, Jack, that was more than three minutes.
That's fine. Other comments, questions? Someone's got to step up, or I'm going to move on.
I know last time this came to the board, I did vote in favor of keeping the badges. After going through another harvest season and hearing not just from staff, talking with the sheriff, and the workers, it come to a realization how difficult it is for them to continue to operate and to recruit, to get workers. Outside of just having seasonal workers come from the valley, we have our own migrant population right here in this county with the vineyards and other commodities that have a workforce. And it is challenging right now with these badges for them to go back and forth between this commodity and the other commodities they're working for in this county. And they're having to go outside of the county to bring those dollars back to support the families that they are living here, whether we want to admit that or not, we do have that population. And listening to those individuals that are trying to also, outside of maybe being a bus driver, trying to get extra money, you know, we're all struggling with paying gas at the tank, they want to get that extra income, and it's a challenge for them to go through the process because of the length that it takes. And I believe Bolger mentioned it, you know, by the time they get through it, they've already found another job, or they're not interested anymore because of the length. And so I'm looking at, I will be supporting staff recommendation based on those conversations that I've had with those individuals over the last couple of months, because it is hurting those individuals right here in this county. I know that is not what individuals want to hear me say, but I've taken enough time, I feel, from April to now, to learn and get that information and talk to individuals that I believe it needs to be checked. It need, we need to make it easier to keep these businesses running and keeping those that want to stay here employed. I understand that they are working with other outfits outside, bringing them in from the Central Valley, but I don't believe they would be doing that if they did not have an easier time here to recruit those individuals and keep their workforce here locally with the current population that we have that is willing to do that job. So I, like Supervisor Stoppa, will be supporting staff recommendation.
Thank you. We can keep conversations in the audience down a little bit. It'd be appreciated. Supervisor Hubbard?
Thank you, Chair. I, too, am going to change my position on this after having had the time to talk to the Sheriff's Department, to Captain Stern, and then with Mr. Oliver's position and staff report, and having been out to these grows and seeing these workforces and seeing the people that work eight hours a day doing this type of work. I feel that it is time to repeal this. So I would be going to repeal. Thank you.
Supervisor Toffenelli?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, it's been a long time ago, but things haven't changed as far as what I'm looking at here in the audience. We still have on the left, we still have on the right, which during all the time that this thing was going on was what happened. So even though things have changed, they haven't. And I will not be supporting this. I will not be supporting this because of a couple of reasons. One is, we still have people that are very afraid of what's going on. I understand not everybody's bad, it's not, but still, we have the members of the public that we represent that do not feel safe. Myself, I have grows around my residential subdivision, and I hear from those people all the time. Some of them look right down on a couple of them. Some run, drive home past some of them, and they're still very afraid. That hasn't changed. I think when we hear about how well it's doing and how safe it is on these places and hear from these other supervisors, I think that's because of the badge system. It's working. Now you're going to eliminate it. Come back here in a year from now, you may not hear the same thing, because it's been eliminated, and anybody can come and they hire anybody they want. At least it's showing that the badge system is working and at least keeps our constituents feeling safe. And that is part of our job, is to make sure that our constituents are safe and feel safe. Even the purpose and the intent of this ordinance itself specifically states under 0.10, "The purpose of this chapter is to reduce certain health and safety risks to law enforcement, civil enforcement officials, and the public at large by preventing those individuals from owning or working at commercial cannabis businesses within Calaveras County who have a prior conviction or convictions of which demonstrate a productivity for violence or violent threats." It's in there. That's in there for a purpose. And I think the badge system is, because of that, is working, and it makes these people feel safe. And the people that I deal with that are by these grows, next to these grows, I hear it all the time, because a lot of them, again, are in my district, are right next to a lot of residential housing, and they're still afraid. And I can't tell them I'm going to vote for this and show them that I'm not trying to represent them as a whole and trying to keep them safe. So I will not be supporting this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I will ask the audience not to do the applause thing. If you feel like clapping, do the happy hands, but I expect there to be... No. You know, that's not necessary. We're going to continue on. I'd like to, I will be supporting this, excuse me, Gary. I'll be supporting this because of your presentation, as well as the endorsement of the sheriff on this. I want to just make a quick comment. You know, if you saw me on a Sunday, and I'm an agriculturist, if you saw me on a Sunday in Copper Square, you might find me undesirable coming into your community, because I've been working all day. And so, you know, let's keep those comments, those of us who work in the dirt and grow things. Sometimes, if you're going into a hardware store, you should not be told you're not welcome in Copper Square, because I don't think that's actually the case. With no further ado, I will ask for a motion on this item.
I'll move this item, sir.
Moved by Supervisor Stoppa?
Director's recommendation.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Supervisor Hubbard? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Carries for one. Thank you. We'll move on to item 19.
Item 19, action item building. One, introduce and waive the first reading of an uncodified ordinance temporarily reducing the cannabis cultivation tax rates specified in County Code Section 3.56.050B133 by 60% through December 31, 2027, as authorized by Section 3.56.070 and two, authorized summary publication. Requires a four-fifth vote of the board.
Doug?
Good morning again. Round two. This is an ordinance we've been bringing back yearly ever since the market took a turn with the cannabis prices. And we've been monitoring as best we can what those prices are locally. I will say that statewide information has always been kind of sketchy. You can get total tax count statewide. You can get total value of all cannabis statewide. But to really dig down, you have to work with the local growers and look at their receipts for their sales and really try to understand what's... and, and really try to understand what's happening. Unfortunately, it, it, it varies a lot. But what we can determine based on, you know, the, the quality, the type, the, the processing, we're looking at between two hundred and fifty to four hundred dollars per pound. Which is still fluctuating and is down from last year where we thought things were starting to come up and stabilize dipping again. Um, now, we could argue that, you know, hey, markets rise and fall all the time and that's fair to say. However, when we look at where the taxes originally started in twenty twenty with that eight hundred to thousand dollars per pound, what we can look at in the industry is that as of now, it has never come up above fifty percent of its starting value. And that's been consistent. It's been below up to fifty percent, but never, never breaching that. So what we're looking at is what the other, uh, counties have been doing and notably, uh, they've been stabilizing at lower rates with their taxes. There was a lot of temporaries that have become permanent. I can see that Sonoma County permanently changed their tax. They did have a two-year reduction and then they permanently, permanently reduced it. Their current outdoor canopy is sixty nine cents a square foot. They started at a dollar. Um, and they reduced that to sixty nine cents. Currently, what we're proposing is to carry over the, uh, the sixty percent reduction that we have maintained throughout the last few years. Um, I will say that this, it, this particular ordinance is unique because I, I have added that we extend this for three years. That was a, that was a department head decision to, to offer this up for discussion because what we're seeing here is that we really don't know what's going to happen with the industry. We don't know what's going to happen if the federal government's going to move it out of a class one, uh, narcotic. We don't know if interstate commerce is going to start, which is going to cause prices to fluctuate. And, and ultimately, uh, if everyone else is stabilizing that we're aware of at a lower rate, a substantially lower rate in some cases, it, we may want to consider having more discussions about a permanent reduction to coincide with the permanent reduction in value. What I'm looking at here is if we extend this out three years and watch it, probably going to start seeing a market trend emerge. Looks like we're seeing it now, but just, just from my limited experience, I don't feel comfortable picking this back up to its original tax value. I think we're going to see a lot of, uh, licenses fold up and go home. So if there's any questions.
Supervisor Stoppa?
Ju- just one, one quick one before we get into, to the debate. So just say, for instance, it was extended for so many years. And at that time, we saw a change in fluctuation in the market that tended to be positive. At that time, could the board bring it back and change it then regardless of how long it's been extended?
At any point within this ordinance, if there's a significant increase, if your board wants to change the taxes, I'll be right back in front of you.
Uh, yes, Supervisor Stoppa, the, the ordinance allows the board to make any adjustments other than obviously to go above what the voters authorized.
Right, exactly. Okay, that's, I just wanted to be clar- clarified that we aren't, if we make a decision, we aren't locking ourselves in on any point if the market changes and we can come back and adjust accordingly.
Correct. In fact, and, and if your board doesn't want me to bring this forward with three years, you could decide to have me bring it into the next meeting with, you know, one year or two years. Whatever, whatever your board wants to do, if you don't feel comfortable keeping it longer than a year, I'm happy to bring it back next year. It was just, it was a.
Counsel?
Initiative on my part to bring it back for three years.
He said something to the point of he could bring it back to change it. But I think we could make the, being this is prior to first reading, the first, the being this is first reading, we could, we could make that change right here and not have to have it brought back if we decided to.
Yes, I agree.
Supervisor Hubbard?
Oh, I'm sorry, no, I don't have any time.
Any other questions before we go to public comment? All right, we'll go to public comment. Everybody knows the drill, three minutes. Come on up. And if you guys queue up, it goes quicker.
Again, I'm Richard Golan, District Five, uh, resident. And let's say in the last few years in Calaveras County, we've had a lot of people that have been adversely affected by rising prices and other economic woes. But the marijuana growers have been singled out for a tax cut. Nobody else that I know of, which I believe creates kind of a double standard in taxation. Furthermore, when this, uh, uh, commercial marijuana, uh, ordinance was passed, it was promoted and passed on the idea and, and, and sold to the public on the idea that it would create a huge tax windfall for the county and that the illegal growers would simply go away and that we would have less crime. None of that happened. I also remember that when Mr. Stoppa voted for this, uh, ordinance, he told us that if it didn't work out the way it was expected, that he would reconsider and it could be repealed. That did not happen either. And things have not worked out for the benefit of the common people. So I am now asking Mr. Stoppa and the other supervisors to make good on your promises. Either collect the big taxes or repeal the ordinance, the, the, the commercial marijuana ordinance. I think that's what needs to be done. Thank you.
Your next speaker?
My name's Karen Shreve. I think it might be a good idea for y'all to hire a couple of single moms to figure out how to balance a budget. I think all of these taxes that you're collecting from individuals and individual businesses in Calaveras County would be pretty well served with a tax break. Lot of tax breaks, everybody, how about the real estate people? I mean, they've taken big hits this last couple of years. Are they getting any tax breaks? Furthermore, where are you going to replace the money from? If you give these guys a tax break, that means that money's not coming into your, your budget. Where are you going to replace that from? Where's it coming from? Let's balance some budgets. Thank you.
I'm Frankie from Angels Camp. It's just real sad that we're back here in this stage. We were promised all of this money. We were going to get eleven million dollars. Jack remembers that. There are two members, uh, of the board here that were part of that discussion at the time when this ordinance was approved. We want the tax money. We do not want to see it reduced. Why should it be reduced? Right now, the county is not taking in enough money to even support all of the activities, uh, that are needed to regulate this business. So you're just digging yourself more in a hole. If they can't make the money, they just need to go out of business, just like anyone else. That's what happens. Things change. You can't make it in the business, you go out of business. You don't get a reduction in tax. I've never gotten a reduction in tax in my life. I'm still paying huge amounts of money on property tax. Why can't that be reduced for me? So I oppose this. I hope my representative, Amanda, you will oppose this. That's my request. Thank you.
Ms. Weatherby?
Aurora Weatherby, District Five. I brought with me an article today that has a direct bearing on taxes on cannabis owed to the state of California. You people have given the cannabis people sixty percent off of their income taxes. Is that correct? And it's for over three years and now you want an additional two years? Sorry, enough is enough. We as taxpayers get, uh, charged two percent every year by Jarvis Gan. My taxes, when I first bought my house fourteen years ago, was like fifteen hundred dollars a year. And now it's well over twenty-three hundred dollars a year. Related to the taxes owed to the state of California, this has to do with a lot of the cannabis dispensaries going out of business for various reasons. Everything from the badging process, which you just repealed, and the closure of many cannabis shops, the latest one is called Ease Management. And what it comes down to is this, that crops were once valued at over seven hundred million dollars for the state of California from cannabis tax. And what do we have owing to the state of California? Seven hundred and thirty-two million dollars probably never collect, collectible because they closed, they've gotten the money and ran. So how are we, a little county, to keep giving these people sixty percent tax cuts? We can't. How much do they owe now? How much do any of the growers owe now like these people here? Seven hundred and thirty-two million dollars worth. That's probably never going to be collected. These people have had five years to make their visits profitable and they haven't made it in that time. They're not going to make it. I'm having a terrible time at eighty-three years old trying to pay my taxes because they keep going up two percent every year. And you turn around and you give these people sixty percent off. Now I can be put out of my home because I can no longer pay my taxes. And you're giving these people sixty percent after five years and want two more years of a sixty percent break? No, that's not fair to anyone my age or anybody that is a senior younger than I am. Seven hundred and thirty-two million dollars owed to the state of California that they're probably never going to collect.
Thank you very much, Ms. Weatherby.
Thank you.
Ms. St. John?
Hi Elaine St. John. I heard, um, Mr. Oliver say that this business is like every other business. That's a direct quote. Well, I don't see any other businesses asking for a tax break. I really don't. And, um, I, I'm having a hard time. I'm a real estate agent. We're not making any money. The economy is bad. I, I would love a tax break too. I mean, we all want free money, but it's not possible. We have to have a budget. And I have friends that work in the dirt. Don Christopher from Christopher Ranch Garlic, he works in the dirt. He's, he's my brother-in-law. I also have a rice farmer. I've never been personally called out by a supervisor before. That was bad. It was, that was really very bad. But anyway, I know you all made up your mind and we're here anyway, just giving us our First Amendment rights. And I hope you will not give them the tax break because everyone's suffering. Thank you.
Jennifer Vicki, which one you want to go next?
Vicki Rankey, Calaveras County. I don't know where to begin. I think we've said this many times about what's going on with this information. So one of the things I'm here to do is to remind people of the past. Measure G was our measure for the marijuana tax to change measure C so it would be easier to collect taxes or from the growers. And it was a canopy tax. And the, the initiative that was on the ballot said establishing maximum canopy cannabis activities tax rates not to exceed seven dollars per square foot, um, for canopy. So we never had a seven dollar tax. It's started at two dollars. When the people read this, they thought, wow, we're going to get seven dollars a square foot. No, it's never been. And then what do you guys do? You make it eighty cents a square foot by reducing it sixty percent. The people are so tired of being lied to by government. They're tired of saying, oh, this is what we're going to do. And, and it gets changed. And so, you know what? I'm sorry, but it's true. The, they need to pay their taxes. They need to pay the money they promised us when we were all in discussion. Oh, we're going to be able to pay you. Sorry that the, the price of marijuana went down. Oh, well, you need to evaluate your business and if you can't make it, you go out of business. And sadly, it's happening all over California, but I don't feel sorry because I don't believe in, um, Calaveras County being a product for marijuana. Uh, just to let you know, there was a, a report put out by the, it was a twenty twenty-three agriculture crop livestock report was out, um, recently on the Board of Supervisors. And they showed an estimated product value of the marijuana here at twenty-nine million, eight hundred and seventy-seven thousand, five hundred dollars. Oh, and they can't afford to pay their taxes? So, you know, we are tired of being, the wool pulled over our eyes, made to believe that we're stupid, that we don't get it. And it's true, we're all struggling. So please do not extend this tax break. Thank you.
Ms. Smith?
Morning Board, Jennifer Smith. I'm going to say this and I've said it before. I think the biggest problem we have is that we're calling this a tax. It is a business, it is a fee to operate. It is not a tax and we can't call it a fee because we know government cannot make more money on fees than it is to regulate a program, a building permit or whatever it is. So to sit up here and have to listen to people, um, insult us and say that we're getting a reduction in taxes, we pay our property taxes, we pay unsecured business taxes, we pay employment taxes, we pay sales taxes. Every input that goes into our farms is paid at retail and sales tax is paid on that. Um, we pay employment taxes, we pay income taxes. My, my income taxes last year were three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. My sales tax to this county was over two hundred and eighty thousand dollars. What are, like, this has to stop. And maybe the solution is we get rid of this tax altogether and we go to a fee program and charge us the fee it costs to regulate the program. Because that is the actual reason we even have this tax. And it's changing in every county. When we first started this program, we had, we're getting twelve hundred dollars a pound. We're now lucky if we get a hundred and fifty dollars a pound. That's an eighty-five percent reduction in wholesale receipts. That doesn't, that's not profit. Okay, we're on the trim side, we were at a hundred dollars a pound, we're at five dollars a pound. That's a ninety-five percent reduction in wholesale receipts. That doesn't take into account our cost of goods. That doesn't take in account the employment, um, that we put into it. That is our gross revenue per pound. Okay, we're, we're all paying increased taxes. We're all paying, the cost of food isn't cheaper for me because it's, um, because I'm a cannabis farmer. Like, let's get rid of this word tax and let's start talking apples to apples. Thank you.
Mr. Bolger? Excuse me, ma'am, would you like to come on up?
She was just being very polite. Uh, hello again, Board, Mark Bolger, Rimrock Farms. Well, I think the people have spoken. I think we've got a groundswell effort here to reduce, nay, eliminate all taxes in Calaveras County, the state of California and the United States of America. You with me, Al? Um, anyway, so coming back to reality here, yeah, none of us want to pay any of those taxes. But cannabis farms pay an excise tax. I'm not going to sit here and bore you guys with the, you know, minutia of cannabis market commodity pricing. The staff report broke it down pretty well. Unfortunately, prices have dipped even since that staff report I'm sure was compiled. Right now, it's not really even a price issue, it's an alleviation issue. Product is just not moving. Um, anyone that's an agricultural producer can tell you this is the natural cycle of things. Prices eke up a little bit, everyone pushes their chips back on the table, prices crash again. Maybe interstate commerce is going to fix that, I don't know. I don't have a crystal ball. What I can tell you right now is we're basically operating at cost of production or a slight loss, maybe a slight profit if you've got more direct to retail or if you're vertically integrated. That's not the majority of the cannabis industry in Calaveras County. No one here is asking for anything special. Staff report shows statewide, there's been reductions across the board. All we're asking is to be competitive. All we're asking is to be competitive. And I would argue that we've been at a slight disadvantage the last several years when you look at reductions in other counties. But hey, 60% is better than nothing. When it comes to the three-year extension, hey, I don't know if anyone wants to keep coming here every November and doing this song and dance. I mean, I certainly don't want to come here every year and sing for my supper, but that's up for you guys. And it sounds like it could be revisited at any moment, so. Yeah, I think at this point, this tax reduction's kept a lot of businesses going. And for the folks in this community that want us to fail, hope we fail, hey, that's a lot of families, that's a lot of jobs. And I wouldn't wish that on anyone. My competitors, myself, other counties. I downright think it's disgusting that people want to see people fail. I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Perch? Jennifer, one of you's got to come up.
I've had a question about the whole day, this whole agenda today. It was about money and about Evergreen. We're spending money at Evergreen to be able to provide a broader spectrum of different counties and how much the infrastructure is going to be given either increases or make a parity with everybody else. In all the years that we've been talking about this, we've asked for a nexus report of everything, every county agency, every hospital. We've asked to find out what's the bottom line cost for marijuana industry being here with overdoses, with law enforcement, with CHP, with everything. And we've never gotten the answers. I'm sure you guys have gotten documents behind the scenes of what's really the bottom line cost. And then to take, to say that, to keep a business here that doesn't follow through with their promises of how much they're going to, the revenue, which is understandable. I mean, tomatoes cost more today than they did yesterday. Pot costs less today than it did yesterday. So that's just the way the ball, you know, bounces. But it just doesn't seem fair to everyone else is to give someone a reduction in the, in a cost that they agreed to to be able to start the business here. That's pretty much all I have to say.
Perch?
Good morning again. Sorry, I had to make a quick run to Copper. I would have stayed around for the last one.
Good morning to you.
Good morning. I was really surprised to hear the Republican Central Committee say that we need to put an excise tax on retirees and real estate and everything else. It's really surprising. I never would have thought I'd hear that from them. But we're very, you know, we want to be treated like a normal industry. We're not. We're the only ones paying this excise tax on, you know, our activity. Our industry is suffering. If we were doing it like on a linear, linear trajectory, you guys would have given us like a 1% tax now based on how prices used to be. And I think you should do that. I think we shouldn't just reduce this thing. Go down to zero for a little bit, try and incubate this industry. We want economic growth. And maybe want to treat it like normal business. Like, we're not excising your cows, Jack. Excising your museum park and everything, like, you know. Steel's not getting a special tax either, Gary. So it's just, it seems, you know, you can, you can, you can, you know, shear the sheep a bunch of times, but you can only eat that land once. And I would just urge you guys to increase it beyond 60. Take five years so we don't have to keep coming back, talking to you. They don't have to hear how much everybody in certain parts of the county hate marijuana and wish it never was here. And they're never going to have, you know, like a constructive thing to add to this conversation. You know, it would be cool not to come and do this all the time. I'd urge you guys to do it for a long time. Go bigger than 60. We're hurting a lot of counties. We're trying to incubate the industry. We do, we employ a lot of people. We do, we don't do crime. We don't do all this other stuff. It'd be helpful for us, it'd be helpful for my family, my kids, coworkers, employees. It'd be helpful for the people that hate us, too. We could spend more at Save Mark. Please, please reduce or eliminate.
Thank you. Is there any further public comment in the room?
I just want to say one thing. Karen Shreve again, District 2, by the way. We don't hate you guys.
If you could address, excuse me, ma'am.
We're kind of love. We're glad that you're producing. I'm sorry. We don't hate those guys. We don't. We don't. We wish that they would find businesses that would help us. If it's not working for them in cannabis, find another crop. We want them here. We want Congress here. We want things to grow in Calaveras County. We want our economy to grow. If it's not working for cannabis, do something else. Maybe get a tax break. Thank you.
Zach.
Chair Germandy, members of the Board, again, Zach Travan. Thank you for the time. I think everyone should keep in mind, before we had cannabis tax here in Calaveras, there was no dollars coming in from legal cannabis businesses. There was only money going out to enforce against illegal cannabis businesses. At that time, you've heard it here before, and I'll say it again. The price was hovering between $1,000 and $1,200 a pound. We've now lost over 66% of that value. And you're seeing an attrition rate statewide amongst cannabis licensees. Where at the peak, we had over 9,000 cannabis licenses statewide. Now that's about 5,000 cannabis licenses statewide. You're seeing cities and counties across the state react to those market conditions to maintain the viability of their legal industry. Because without the legal industry, all we are left with is illegal operations that comply with no regulations, they follow no laws, they have no regard for their fellow community members, and they contribute nothing to the local economy. And so, again, as part of a pragmatic policy solution to adjust with these market conditions in order to maintain the viability of this multimillion-dollar source of revenue here in the county from legal tax-paying businesses, again, the same businesses and the same people that pay all of the same taxes that traditional businesses and individuals pay. This is an additional special tax based on an additional special commercial activity. And it is critical to maintain the viability of this legal industry here in California that we extend this tax reduction. I'm here in full support of staff's recommendation in this regard. I appreciate your thoughtful consideration on this. And again, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Further comment in the room? Is there any comment online?
We have no online public comment.
Very well. I'll bring it back to the Board for further discussion and comments. Ben, who's leading us off?
There's quite a few things brought up. I heard the income tax reduction. This is not an income tax. This is an excise tax. The state has no badging system. They do background checks on owners. There's no badge provided for that. So the, you know, that's neither here nor there. Something that was brought up, and I, and I'm glad it was. The agricultural report, the agricultural commodities valued at $29,877,000 for marijuana within Calaveras County. At the same time, $2 million, that very same year, $2.8 million of taxes, excise tax, were collected from that as that one sole excise tax. That's 9.3% of the total commodity. That's almost 10%. Now, that's on top of them paying their gross receipts sales taxes. That's on top of them paying the 100% of what? And 2% going up every year on their assessed taxes for the buildings and everything they own. On top of their income tax spending. Everything. So every business in Calaveras County, when they pay their taxes that they think should be reduced, I think my taxes should be reduced. But I can't reduce them, and I wouldn't do them just for me. But at that point, these, these business owners are paying everything you do, going up the same rate you do, plus another 9.3% on gross. So. No, it's 9.3%. It is correct. On, you know, now, we passed this as a board to go out to the vote of the people. The people voted on it. We, since we've had this forward, you know, because people are like, you know, follow up and they actually collect the money, we've collected a total of $12,923,069 from this industry on the excise tax alone. I would like to hear about one business within that time or within the last decade for that matter that has paid that much in taxes to Calaveras County separate from all the other normal taxes. So, none, none, none. When, when, so this here is proof of money collected in benefit for the people in Calaveras County, which in part are holding up different departments when other things go down. Nothing against you, Mr. Oliver, for one. You benefit from this because building in the county across the state has gone down, and you're not benefiting from the permits fees for your, for your department. So this has helped to backfill in some of that because it's general fund money on that almost $13 million within the last four years. So from my train of thought, the Indians had it right. When they hunted the buffalo, they only took what they needed. And then my ancestors came in, and they annihilated the herd. And then we didn't have any buffalo around. I'm not going to kill the herd off so I can feed everyone for one day and not have anything in the future. I think that we need to be pragmatic moving forward and move with the market when it comes to this excise tax. The rest is set in stone, and they will pull, pay their full amount as put forward. That's where I stand on this.
Other comments from the Board? All right. Any comments online? We already checked online. Is there a motion?
Tonight.
Please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, I voted for this last time, and it was a couple of reasons why I did vote for this last time. One of it was I did not know, we did not know at the time what the state was going to do with their budget. We looked like we'd having some, could have some big cuts to the county, which they had done in the past. And I felt that because of the building departments' budget at the time, building has slowed down, that it was needed in order to continue and not have drastic cuts. So that's the reasons why I voted for it the last time. And some of the other comments, I'm not going to vote for it this time because I think it's, the people voted on it. They haven't got what they voted on since it was voted in. But, but I got to say, when it's talked about other businesses don't pay taxes like this, they would if the people voted for it. If an initiative came onto the ballot and they said, I'm in the steel industry, that every pound of steel needs to be taxed a dollar that you use, then I would be paying a dollar for every tax that I use, every pound that I use of steel. So that's what the people voted on. That's what the people in Calaveras County felt that they wanted. And that's why it's here. We wouldn't be sitting here addressing it if it failed. But it didn't fail. So the only way to reduce that, to go back to that, is put another initiative on the ballot that says to repeal it.
That's right.
So I, we are where we are. And that's what we're supposed to be upholding is what it is. And we've been trying to give a break to this business for the last five years. And, and we have. But at some point, we say, hey, we need to go to what was actually voted on and where people think we should be. So I can't support this.
All right. Bring it back. Are there any further comments or a motion to approve?
All make the motion to reduce and waive first reading of an uncodified ordinance temporarily reducing the cannabis cultivation tax raised specified in County Code Section 3.56050B-1-3 by 60% through December 31, 2027, as authorized by Section 3.56.070 and authorize summary publication. And you all know this takes a fourth fist bump.
All right. Is there a second?
All second.
Second by, motion by Supervisor Stopper. Second by Supervisor Hubbard. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Carrie's 4-1. Very well. We'll move on to Supervisor announcements.
In compliance with Government Code 53232.3D, Board members shall provide brief reports on any meetings attended at the expense of the local agency and may make other announcements or report out.
All agree.
Supervisor Hubbard, do you want to begin?
Yes, thank you, Chair. I'd like to start off by commending the Big Tree State Park. They were successfully able to do the 1,300-acre burn, which...
Why don't you give it a minute while this clears out? Former Supervisor, clap. If you guys are done, take it outside. Thank you.
Thank you. I just, I'll reiterate that the South Grove burn happened. It was a 1,300-acre burn of really the entire South Grove. It was purportedly the biggest prescribed burn in California, and it was done beautifully. And I was, I received a presentation on the burn, and it looks like it was very successful. On the 26th of last month, we did a Winterwise Town Hall. I really wanted to thank, our Sheriff is still here. I really wanted to, Sheriff Whiting, thank you so much for being there with Eric Holt, Mattan Stark, Michael McGannett, Monica and Mark from Public Works, and Ian from Animal Services came and gave up their Saturdays to be there for the Winterwise Town Hall, which was very successful as well. On the 28th, I attended the CSCSA meeting. And our director is going to be stepping down shortly and will be replaced by her deputy. On the 31st, just wanted to say that Halloween at the county was an amazing event. It was very well done. It's amazing the amount of creativity that's here in the county. And it just, the sense of camaraderie was amazing. Dia del Marstos, Bears & Brews were fantastic over the weekend. On the 4th, I attended a meeting with Caltrans regarding the crosswalk over Highway 49, which services the Michelson School. On the 7th, I attended the Agency on Aging meeting. And I'm very happy that in the consent agenda, we'll see those vans come to the county from common grounds. And on the 10th, again, I really wanted to shout out to Captain Tim Stern and the Cold Case Team. The work that they're doing is really commendable and amazing. And then yesterday, I emceed the Veterans Memorial Celebration in Murphy's, which was incredibly well-attended. We managed to finish just before the downpour. The one thing that I did want to mention, and I found very interesting, is the children that were in the audience that went to ask the veterans, they were giving gifts, they didn't ask the women. And I had the women veterans come up to me and say, next year, would you please commend the women veterans? So I'll say that now. I think that it was, it was a great event, and you can't forget the women who've served as well. So thank you.
Go. Supervisor Follin.
I attended COG and GTA with Supervisor Toffenawi. And I'll let him report out.
You're going to let me report out? You do that every time.
I know, because it happened, that happened in your district, not mine. And I get to look. Other than that, I have nothing to report.
Supervisor Toffenawi.
Yeah, she's referring to the Valley Springs Elementary School road improvements there. It's safer out to school, and it was fantastic. It really was a good job done by Public Works. And it's nothing but rave from people and parents now with the kids. A safe way to get to school. It really was a good project. There is a Phase 2 that's coming up. When that'll start, I don't know right now. We have to look for some funding for it. But when it's finished, it'll be completely a wonderful job. And I want to thank Sheriff Whiting and her volunteers that helped during the construction part of it because there was confusion there because we had to reroute where everybody goes while we tore up the street, redid it. And thank the volunteers for their job in keeping traffic and people's tempers down. And it was good. I also attended a, an emcee, actually, the Veterans Day Ceremony at the Vets Hall in Valley Springs. It was well-attended. It was well-done. And I want to thank everybody involved in that and all the vets that showed up, and even the vets that didn't show up that live here in Calaveras County.
Thank you. Supervisor Stopper?
I appreciate both of you.
I appreciate both of you working forward on the Safe Schools Routes to School Plan. It's been going on since two thousand seventeen and you've been working on it since your first term here. Yeah, yeah. And, you know, I just got a little piece in just because I spoke out loud. But thank you for giving it done, Gary. Appreciate it. CSAGS next week. You know, anything that has to do with California costs us. So, I'll be attending that. I believe that at least Martin will be. Will you be?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Garamendi. You've, you've, you've got a special package at home to take care of?
Yes.
And Mr. Toffenelli?
I will not be attending that.
With that, you know, I haven't done anything to cost the county too much recently, so. I'll stop for that.
Very good. There's nothing I'm required by law to report. I'd like to welcome Supervisor-elect Hendall, who's monitoring us today. Good to see you. And she will be attending CSAG also. Any Madam CEO? Anything? Madam Counsel? Madam Clerk? Very well, we stand adjourned.